Are you good? Good, good.
Yes, we are. This must be from last team.
Ladies and gentlemen, ribbon stand, please stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dave Isley, Deputy Director of Veterans Affairs, who was promoted from within and does an incredible job. He served United States Marine Corps for three years following 9/11 as an infantry rifleman. He is a rifle and pistol expert, and he earned a Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Medal, and the Commendation Medal during his years of service. I would also just like to say that he is a veterans veteran that really cares about everyone that's a veteran, not just Lackawanna County, but all of our veterans 24/7, and he'll be out at 3 o'clock in the morning if somebody needs him, be there. It's an honor, a privilege to have you here. Thank you for your service, Dave.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we just have a moment of silence for the citizens that lost their lives in Virginia Beach at their municipal building about a week and a half ago? Just another tragedy, and please keep their families and the ones that are still in the hospital convalescing in your thoughts and prayers. This is a very trying time for them, and something that just shouldn't be going on anywhere across our country or anywhere in the world. Life is so precious, and no one leads to just take it away like that. Just horrible, horrible circumstance. Just a moment of silence. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, June 12, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting together, 10:00 AM in the chemist's conference room at 123 Wyoming Avenue, the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. Like to make a motion for the approval and reading of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Proclamation presentations, 19-0134, Maureen McWiggin. Well, we'll do the reverse. We'll do the small business spotlight. Do you have the small business here today? All right. An opportunity to see your business on Washington Avenue, right? Go right over to the podium. This is Commissioner Cummings, who's gonna talk about your business and everything that's going on. It's great.
Maureen Ginkgo, welcome. Tell us about your business.
Well, it's a small business. We just opened it in February 1st. It's me and my mom running the place. My son is the president of it. He's six years old. He's self-proclaimed president. We have breakfast, lunch, we stay open until 6:00. Trying to make a living, trying hard. It's a little bit slow now, so welcome. Anybody bring your money to my place, please. And what else? That's it. Trying hard, trying to serve healthy, fresh food. We make crepes, salads, wraps. I bake a lot by myself, from scratch. Very popular Russian Napoleon cake. That's a winner.
Any questions? When did you open?
February 1st, and we had grand open on March 1st, I believe.
And what made you decide on this type of business?
My mom was a nurse. It's a very, very hard job, and she didn't want to work in the medical field anymore. I was a dental hygienist. I love my job, I love the pay, but I was driving more than two hours a day for my work. So we decided that we need to be local and less stressful. That's all.
And you chose a small business, huh?
Yes, and I love to cook. I just love to cook.
Good, good. Well, I wish you all the luck in the world, and congratulations on your own business. And very proud of you staying here locally, and hope everything works out well for you.
That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Nocchieri.
Good luck, and I hope everything works well for you, and it goes great. I haven't had a milkshake in a long time. I think I'll be up today.
All right, we'll be there.
Maureen, I had an opportunity to be there for the actual ribbon cutting. I actually stopped in along the way. Great spot. Everybody's right on top. Soon as someone comes in, they're there to make sure that you're served and taken care of immediately. Food was very, very good, and I'd just like to thank you for, you know, for being part of the dream of downtown Scranton.
Thank you, thank you for stopping by.
Yes, absolutely. It really matters to us and all the citizens of Lackawanna County. I mean, the small businesses are the lifeblood of our community and a lot of communities throughout our country. But our area, you know what I mean, like Main Street USA and downtown Scranton really matters to the Board of Commissioners, and we'd just like to congratulate you for a job well done. And, you know, I know you're probably putting in more hours there, but it's your place. It's your business. You're not spending that hour, two-hour ride every day. You know what I mean? And if your kids, you know, I mean, you can have your child there with you. I saw your son that day. So, you know, I mean, they grow up in the business. You know what I mean? They learn their work ethic, and they learn about the business that they may inherit or they may be doing as they get to be teenagers. So it's really good, and it works all the way around in a big circle, but congratulations. We're just so happy that you're in downtown Scranton for us. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
Today, we give a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, how do I say this? Crocus?
Crocus, like a flower.
Crocus Cafe. In honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 12th day of June 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Nocchieri, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up. Thank you so much. Come on up. Picture phone? Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right there. Couple of them, we smile. Flash. All right, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now, at this time, we're gonna go back to 19-0134, Lackawanna County Good Works. Our own Deputy Director, Maureen McWiggin, and her faithful assistant, Chris Calvi, would please come up to the podium.
Luckily, we're the arts department, so we can get away with being late, right? So I apologize.
That's why we moved them forward.
I apologize. We couldn't get out of the office this morning, which is, I guess I shows we're working. So you'd like me to talk about the award we received today?
Yes.
So I'm really excited about this. The county belongs to the National Association of Counties, which is our professional development organization. So every year, they have an achievement award where, they have different categories, and they get hundreds of applications. So we applied in the arts and culture category for our Arts Engage Task Force, which I'm really proud of. I work with a lot of great colleagues. We're very lucky here in the county. So what that is, is a cross collaborative initiative. We have a lot of departments on it. Agency on Aging is here, I see, and Office of Youth and Family Services, and Bill Browning, who heads the Human Services. Mike Brown also sits on it from Technology, the Office of Drug and Alcohol, the Mental Health Office, Economic Development. We also have a couple of nonprofits, the Deutsch Institute and Outreach, which does a lot of human services. So I definitely wanna thank my colleagues, because we all come together about once a month. This started with the success of our Arts Engage Program, which places at-risk youth into our arts organizations, and we've seen, we actually have data, that children that participate in that stay in our services for less time. And that was Bill Browning's idea back in 2008. And we had such success with that, we thought, why don't we expand it? Oh, we also have the Veterans Coalition, so that's another population we're working with. So all of these populations that we are trying to connect to the community and help heal or, you know, reach, you know, be successful in life. So we're using the arts to do that. So we, last year, we had a veterans writing program. We did an intergenerational cooking program, a mural project, which you probably see some of them downstairs. We've started, we were able to give tickets for women in recovery and children and youth from our services to come to concerts. And I could list a lot, but I also have to thank my Chris Calvi, who manages a lot of that program with us, our program manager. So it's all of us working together. So we were recognized, because cross collaboration is a big thing now in the country, so they gave us an award to recognize our hard work. And I'd like to thank the commissioners for supporting this. Without that leadership, we wouldn't be able to do this wonderful kind of work.
It's an honor. Bill, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Yeah.
I see Sandy and Brenda are here, too. I'm sorry, my back was to you guys. They are from the Veterans, NEPA, Veterans Coalition, and Economic Planning, so.
Thanks for being here, everyone.
I think that it's a testament to Lackawanna County's creativity that we're able to partner with an arts program. We're the first, I think, in the state to actually do that. Actually, in Philadelphia, they tried doing it with the Mural Arts Program, and after they heard about our program, they started, Philadelphia called us and wanted to know how we're measuring it and how we're doing it successfully. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity. The kids, we've actually seen kids that were involved in gang activities that changed their entire life and have devoted to the arts rather than going back to that culture. So just wanna thank the commissioners and Maureen and everyone involved for that partnership.
It's funded through your office, correct?
It is.
And how much is the funding?
For the kids, yeah.
For the kids, it's about $150,000 a year.
And then the other programs, what's beautiful about this program, I think, is that, that's why people like cross collaboration, is we share resources, including funding. So some of the funding may come from my department, and some of it may come from aging, because they need to provide program activities. So we share a lot of resources, which is nice, so that we're not all bearing the cost.
And it's mostly state funds, so county share for that is about $30,000.
County shares 30?
Yep.
Yeah, I knew that was funded by them. Thank you very much, I appreciate your eye work.
Commissioner Cummings?
Oh. Well, yeah, no, I mean, I remember meeting and sitting on some of the boards to review some of this, and I know, Bill, and, you know, I don't know about the work that Area Agency on Aging is doing on it, is, are they involved as well?
Oh, yeah. Jason, the director, and I had created a lot of great programs last year that I mentioned, the intergenerational cooking program, the mural program. We've had the community older adult centers paint a lot of our butterflies, which were just on display for First Friday. So, yes, we've developed, and we're gonna do more this summer and fall.
Okay. Well, I know I sat on some of the committees, so I appreciate the work that they've done as well, and, you know, I mean, it's not just, you know, the ideas and the funding that come here, but then there's volunteers that come in and actually volunteer their time to, you know, grade all these programs and sit and listen to all these programs. And, you know, they should also be recognized for the volunteer time that they put in to actually do this work and, you know, help Maureen and Chris with, you know, deciding, 'cause, you know, it takes your time and effort and a lot of research, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, when I was there, there was a lot of, you know, back and forth banter, because you know how I am, but anyway, you know, I mean, we're trying to make the programs better, but it's a good thing to have a whole bunch of different people coming in and decide on how their money is going to be spent, and they actually take that time to volunteer and come in and do that. So for everyone that was involved in any of these programs, it's, you know, I applaud all of your work. So thank you for the work that you've done, and, you know, you're obviously doing a great job when you're recognized nationally, so congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. You've always been diligent about our process, which I'm actually very proud of. We do take it seriously and have a panel for the youth funding program, and then we have amazing caseworkers and staff, actually from the office, and Chris, they follow up all year to make sure the programs, and our evaluative team is very strong. So it is definitely a group effort for all these programs, but especially for the youth one that has really grown over 10 years, we're very proud of the process and the results.
Well, and all of you should be proud of the fact that you implemented that. You implemented those committees. You're not just, you know, handing out, you know, money for nothing. These are great causes that you're working on, and you're doing a good job leading that. So thank you for, all of you, for doing this, and for spending the taxpayers' money in a way that's gonna actually help our youth and children, so, and our elderly. Thank you very much for all the work that you've been doing, and doing it appropriately. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Nocchieri.
As usual, your department does a great job, and it's the fact that you collaborate with the other departments makes it work that much better, and I'm very happy with the way things have been going there, and keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you.
The cross collaboration is the key to this whole thing. I mean, it's everybody, and it hits every, you know, segment of our county. Maureen, I know that, you know, I mean, Bill's here and stuff, but this is a big thing. It really matters to our citizens of Lackawanna County, and to be nationally recognized by NAICO, that's huge for us. So congratulations to all the departments that are here, and congratulations to you and Chris. Fine job, as usual.
Thank you. We have a certificate here.
Thank you again for your support as well.
Absolutely.
You bring that up, yeah.
Okay, we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners is hereby recognize Arts Engage in honor of receiving the 2019 National Association of Counties Achievement Award in the category of Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation. Congratulations. We'd like all the departments to come up. Absolutely, everyone, Area Aging, NEPA.
Congratulations.
The paper is good. It's not cheap.
Congratulations. Congratulations on that.
How are you doing, sir?
Hi. Congratulations. Are you guys doing? Oh, I didn't know that. Congratulations. Congratulations. All people. Go ahead. Ricky, set us up, will you? Chairs out the way.
We're gonna slide everybody down. Actually, Bill should hold the cards. Just slide down a few steps, and everybody follow.
You're the brainchild.
Yes. Bill is the one that, yeah. I think the commissioner should be there. Slide down. Come over here. Come over here. It's Maureen. No, Maureen needs to be by me. Okay.
Way to get it to you.
There we go.
Looks like the American flag now.
Here we go. Ready? One, two, three. Everybody smile, and look at me. Flash. One more. All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a little frames upstairs?
Yeah, we got a frame.
Ricky, make sure Maureen gets a frame for that. They have frames upstairs. There's always great things going on in Lackawanna County. That's just a, like I said, just a great effort on behalf of a lot of our departments working together for one great cause, the citizens. Okay. Okay. Conservation District, this is, here's Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah.
Jerry Stiles, how are you, sir? How are you guys doing today?
Good morning, and thank you for having us. As you know, Commissioner Cummings is on our board. She's an active member of the Conservation District Board of Directors. She encouraged us to come down today to talk about one of the programs that the County Conservation District administers, and that is the Chapter 102 Program, which is the state's rules and regulations for earth-moving and earth disturbance activities. I have Kim Nagel here with me today. She helps administer that program. She is our Erosion Control Inspector, does a lot of inspections on construction sites, and she's gonna just give a brief overview of that program, and then I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what we're doing out at the county parks.
Okay. The scope and purpose of the Chapter 102 Erosion and Sediment Control Program requires persons proposing or conducting earth disturbance activities to develop and implement and maintain best management practice, also known as BMPs, to minimize the potential for accelerated erosion and sedimentation, and to manage post-construction storm water. The BMP shall be undertaken to protect, maintain, reclaim, and restore water quality and the existing and designated uses of waters of this Commonwealth. The main goal of the program is to minimize the potential for sediment to get into waters of the Commonwealth. Sediment is the largest pollutant by volume in the state of Pennsylvania. Sediment reduces water quality, and it can kill many species of aquatic life, particularly fish and insects, and potentially cause flooding by reducing streams' carrying capacity. That is why this is an important program, because it helps to protect water quality in Lackawanna County. There are three responsibilities that the district has under this program. The first one is to review erosion control plans for construction activity. The second one is to perform periodic inspections on earth-moving sites, and the third one is to respond and investigate complaints regarding earth-moving activities. Last year, the Conservation District reviewed over 125 ENS plans, conducted over 180 ENS site inspections, provided technical assistance to over 820 individuals, and over 30 sediment runoff complaints from construction sites were addressed.
That's a lot of work. I mean, Kim comes in, and now she had a video, but we don't have time to see it, but if you ever see those, what are they called, Kim, the snakes? They look like a big?
Oh, compost filter sock.
Compost filter, it's a compost filter sock. Can you explain what that is? They probably see them a lot.
Yep, so on construction sites around the county, you can see compost filter socks. They range in colors from black to black and red and green. There's different sizes. They help filter sediment from storm water on construction sites, capture sediment before it leaves site.
And they have all different kinds of programs that she goes and does the inspections for. You do a great job, and I'm really proud of your work, so thank you so much for coming down and educating the public on some of the things that you do, and keep up the great work. I appreciate it.
But that's really interesting, 'cause a lot of people, when they go by a work site, they might not understand why those silt screens and stuff are like that or there, if they don't have a clue.
They don't know. We do a lot of work in regards to rainwater, you know, runoff and trying to prevent contamination of our sites, from our sites, so they do such a great job. I'm very proud of the work they're doing, so just wanna make sure that the public's aware of everything that they're working on, and how busy they are, and where their money's going when they do talk about conservation funding at the state and federal level, where it's going. This is where it's going to, programs like this, to help keep our water clean. That's just one of them.
Amazing. Commissioner Nocchieri.
I'd like to thank you for your job, but I'd also like to commend Commissioner Cummings for her involvement on that conservation board. She's done a great job, and she's very active and interested in that work, and she has done a stand-up job there. And keep up the good work, everyone.
Thank you.
That's the truth, actually. You know, you brought, you bring them in every so often, and it's good, because a lot of people just don't understand. I mean, the Conservation District, really, they would come to meetings, it would be like about a grant or something like that, it would never be to actually explain, you know, what's going on, what's going on with our fish population or anything, just water in general, soil. It really matters, Commissioner. You do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Jerry, great job, both of you.
So the other thing that we wanted to talk about this morning is the Conservation District purchased many different types of bird boxes from the Pennsylvania Game Commission. You can see the logo here. And we will be installing those bird boxes. We were out at McDade Park yesterday, and also Covington Park. We have Alesworth and Merly Sernoski yet to go, but this is a bluebird box, and this is also the smallest of the bird boxes that we'll be installing. The barred owl box that we have weighs 25 pounds. So you can imagine getting up on a ladder and wrestling with that and trying to get that put installed on a tree, so. But we also wanna thank the Parks and Rec Department, who have been helping us with that. Mark Duer does a great job, and we're doing this to help enhance the county parks. They're such great parks. We were out there yesterday, and like I said, they're great parks, and we're just doing this to enhance the wildlife, and it's just something else for the citizens of the county to enjoy. A lot of people like to go bird watching, and so this is just one way to enhance the county parks, and we paid for this out of some of the Conservation District funds, and we'll be out installing these bird boxes in the next couple of weeks.
How much rent do the birds pay?
They don't pay any rent. Tax-free.
Why does the Game Commission give you the boxes? Why do you have to purchase them?
I think they do it as a fundraiser for some of the programs that they do, Commissioner. So we, there was a site in, out near State College. We went out and picked them up, because the shipping was astronomical, so we just went and picked them up. So this is a bluebird box. There's an American kestrel, which is a small member of the hawk family, wood duck, barred owl, and also bat boxes as well.
Oh, yeah, let's get one of them.
At McDade, we installed a, we installed a bat box on the back of the old breaker yesterday.
That's a great spot, actually.
Fantastic spot for it, so.
How did you get up there? Oh, okay, no, you want to, yeah, okay, I got it.
There's pictures.
Yeah, I'm amazed.
I'm up on a ladder, she's up in a tree, we're, yeah.
What is your website, Jerry? Because I know a lot of people don't even know about.
Website is, we have a Facebook page. You can look us up on Facebook, Lackawanna County Conservation District. Our website is www.lccd.net.
Thank you both, and thank you for coming in, Kim, and taking the time.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate your work. Good job.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Resolutions, 19-0123.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers from 282873 through 284484 inclusive totaling $2,788,778.44. Electronic fund transfers, including all payable accounts totaling $5,058,629.27.
Gary, anything that we?
Our office is audited this list of payables, Commissioners, and included in today's payables are two items of note. One is an Economic Development Department check through the Commercial Loan Job Incentive Program. So there's a check included today for $5,437.50, which is to offset an SBA loan closing, the SBA loan closing costs for that loan. Also, there are 784 checks totaling $107,707.99, and those checks are payable to election workers for the May 21st election, primary election. Due to an IT software switch, these election checks were paid much later than normal.
Yeah, as I say.
Yeah, it took about a little over two weeks for the workers to receive them, as opposed to the typical three days. And so work is being done with the new software by the Information Technology Office and the Election Bureau to speed up that process once again.
I'd like to thank all the election day workers. That's a long day, and I mean, it's 13 hours from 8:00, 7:00 in the morning till late at night, but it's an hour before, hour after, at least. It's like a 15, 16-hour day.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to thank them. It's a great job, and we're gonna get them their check expedient as possible, so we'll be okay now. But everything else is good, Gary?
Everything else is good, yes.
Commissioner, I have a question. On that check, it's for Backstreets Enterprises, that loan? Is that the loan for them?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, 'cause I appreciate the more detailed report. Thank you very much for that.
And we're holding that check until today's vote, because of the discussions we had last week, last meeting.
Yeah, and they're gonna go on, and it's gonna be ongoing as well, so I appreciate the fact that you put those out there, and, you know, it's good to know where our loans are going to, anyway, so I'm not sure why we weren't, you know, they didn't come to a work session with that, so maybe we can involve them in the work session when they approve those. That'd be great.
Okay. Need to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nocchieri?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0123.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor.
Due to an IT software switch, these election checks were paid much later than normal.
Yeah, as I say.
Yeah, it took about a little over two weeks for the workers to receive them, as opposed to the typical three days, and so work is being done with the new software by the Information Technology Office and the Election Bureau to speed up that process once again.
I'd like to thank all the election day workers. That's a long day, and I mean, it's 13 hours from 8:00, 7:00 in the morning till late at night, but it's an hour before, hour after, at least. It's like a 15, 16-hour day.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to thank them, it's a great job, and we're going to get them their check expedient as possible, so we'll be okay now. But everything else is good, Gary?
Everything else is good, yes.
Commissioner, I have a question. On that check, it's for Backstreets Enterprises, that loan? Is that the loan for them?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, because I appreciate the more detailed report. Thank you very much for that.
And we're holding that check until today's vote, because of the discussions we had last week, last meeting.
Yeah, and they're going to go on, and it's going to be ongoing as well, so I appreciate the fact that you put those out there, and, you know, it's good to know where our loans are going to anyway, so not sure why we weren't, you know, they didn't come to a work session with that, so maybe we can involve them in the work session when they approve those. That'd be great.
Okay, like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, 19-0123.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor for the Jefferson Street Storm Water Improvement Project Phase Two. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Taylor Jefferson Street Storm Water Improvement Project Phase Two. General Construction Rock Bottom Construction LLC 1022 Einan German Road, German, Pennsylvania 18433, the lowest, most reasonable, and qualified bidder for $123,230. And here to speak on this is our Acting Economic Development Director, Brenda Sacco.
Good morning. The, these are standard required agreements for our CDBG program. So, basically, the Taylor Cooperation Agreement and the Contractor Agreement, and then the Springbrook and the Scott Township, they're all very similar agreements. They basically are agreements between the county and the municipalities that states the rights and responsibilities of both parties, and the agreement also protects the county in case of project overages. And then the contractor agreements are awards that actually award the project to the contractor who was the lowest, most responsible bidder.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Do we pick these, Brenda, or do the municipalities do that on their, do they come to us with them?
The municipalities actually choose the projects. We administer the program on their behalf, so we ensure that all of the requirements that the federal government, state government, ask us to do, that we do, and a big part of this is making sure there's citizen participation as well, so it's not just the municipality picking the project. They have to actually have a public hearing stating this is what they intend to do.
Good, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I read with the board. Am I going to consolidate the three of them? If that's okay? Okay, like to make a motion for 19-0123, 19-0124, and 19-0125. Can I have a second?
We can give a second, but we should read them, though, right? Yeah, okay.
Can you read them?
Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is 190124. This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Township of Springbrook. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Township of Springbrook for the Springbrook Township Building ADA Restroom Accessibility Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Township of Springbrook, Springbrook Township Building ADA Restroom Accessibility Project. General Construction AJ Guzzi, General Contractor, Nine Skyline Drive, Clark Summit, PA 18411, lowest, most reasonable, and qualified bidder for $33,869.
Roll call.
Oh, we have one more?
Oh, one more, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Township of Scott. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Township of Scott for Scott Township Building ADA Elevator Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Township of Scott, Scott Township Building ADA Elevator Project. General Construction Mar Paul Company Incorporated 1335 Veteran Memorial Drive, Jessup 18434, lowest, most reasonable, and qualified bidder for $175,000.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0126.
This is authorizing modifications to the Community Development Block Grant Programs. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to submit modifications to the following County Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Federal Fiscal Year 2016, the modification will transfer $57,433 out of the Housing Rehabilitation Line Item and create the Street Improvement Line Item for the Elephant Kimberly Circle Street Improvement Project. Federal Fiscal Year 2018, the modification will transfer $29,206 from the Housing Rehabilitation Line Item and create the Street Improvement Line Item for the Elephant Kimberly Circle Street Improvement Project. Be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Here to speak on it is Brenda Sacco.
This resolution is basically allowing the county to submit a CDBG modification request on behalf of the Elephant Borough to the state, to the PA Department of Economic Development. It's moving money from one project to another, but again, you have to have citizen participation, so it's stating that they would like to create this project, which is Street Improvement on Kimberly Circle.
Does the board have any questions?
Just 2016, so did they not utilize that money, or how did that...
They have five years to use the money.
Yeah, so did they just change projects, or how does that work?
We try to use the oldest money first, so we move the oldest into the project, so we can expend it, so that we don't have a situation that it expires.
Okay. When does it expire, do you know?
The 2016. I don't have the exact expiration. It's usually awarded a year later, so from '17, and then five years.
Okay, thank you.
Probably '22.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the modification of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, 19-0127.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is ratifying the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant for North Pocono, ratifying the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant to the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for the North Pocono Trail Development. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County supports local efforts focused on job development and infrastructure improvement, which promote employment and recreation opportunities for residents of the county, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program for the North Pocono Trail to assist with the development and construction of approximately four miles of trail from Dunmore Borough to Elmhurst Township in the amount of $250,000. And now therefore, be it resolved that Lackawanna County does hereby authorize and ratify the submission of this application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of the project as detailed. Be it further resolved, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents and accept any awards, if approved, related to this Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program.
Okay.
Here to speak is Brenda Sacco.
This is just a standard resolution stating our submission of the Greenway Trails and Recreation Program Grants, and again, it's just contributing to the North Pocono Trail Development that we've already begun.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion ratifying the submission of the Greenway Trails and Recreation Program Grant for North Pocono. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, 19-0136.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is ratifying the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant for Lakeland School District, ratifying and approving the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant to the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Lakeland School District for the Field and Track Renovation Project. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County supports local efforts focused on job development and infrastructure improvement, which promote employment and recreation opportunities for residents of the county, and whereas Lackawanna County is sponsoring a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program on behalf of the Lakeland School District to assist with the renovation of the baseball field and track at 1355 Lakeland Drive, Scott Township, PA 18433, in the amount of $250,000. And now therefore, be it resolved that Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the submission of this application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of the above-named entity and project as detailed. Be it further resolved, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents and accept any awards, if approved, related to this Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program. Here to speak, one more time, Brenda Sacco.
This is my last one. This, again, is the same as the North Pocono Trail Development Grant Submission. It is required to have a resolution stating our intent to submit the application. Lakeland itself cannot submit that application, so we do it on their behalf.
This is for a baseball field. This isn't for a trailer, right? What is this for?
Sandy, do you want to come up and talk to the Lakeland a little bit? Sandy actually wrote the, well, assisted in the application process.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
What's the money being used for?
They are trying to attempt, they have severe drainage issues, storm water controls in their baseball field and their track area, so they had wanted to apply for this funding so that they didn't have to use additional tax dollars or take away from curriculum in the school district to make these repairs. The maximum amount available on this grant is $250,000, and they have to provide a 15% match to that $250,000, if it's awarded in full.
Okay, so they're just looking for money to help with their baseball, that's what I was asking for, the field...
Baseball field and track renovations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
They've had water problems up there for a while. This will be a major plus for their athletic department.
Yes, and they couldn't do it without us, so...
Okay, like to make a motion ratifying the submission of the, ratifying the submission of the Greenway Trails and Recreation Program Grant for Lakeland High School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
19-0128.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving Office of Youth and Family Services Agreements. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts for July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, as attached here too. And here to speak on this resolution is our Director of Human Services, Bill Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize, my allergies are a little off, so my voice is a little compromised, but these are the standard annual contracts and renewals of contracts for various service providers, placement resources, professional contracts. Nothing really unusual. These are negotiated contracts throughout the year and continuation of those services.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
Just on United Neighborhood Centers, what, they're getting an allocation of $5,000?
Yep.
What's that one for, Bill?
The case management, we have several programs with them for housing, transitional housing, and they do the case management piece of that, so helping people access services for homelessness.
Homelessness?
Yep.
Is it for just the youth, or is that for...
It's transitional youth, so primarily older youth.
Oh, so maybe after they're 18 or 21, so they have, yeah, I understand what you're talking about, so they have nowhere to go, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion approving the Office of Youth and Family Service Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Bill. 19-0129.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving a Department of Human Services Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Professional Contract for July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, as attached here too. Here to speak on this resolution is Bill Browning.
This is the Behavioral Health Research Institute. It is a 501(c)(3) that's been active in this county for, well, active is probably a generous word. It's been in the county for 20 years. There is a board meeting approximately a year ago, reorganized, and the responsibility of this board is to synthesize social service research and to move it into action. There are a lot of universities locally that are doing research on social projects, but they stay in academia, so this is to actually evaluate and see if it's something that could be done to assist in relevant programs. A good example would be recently, we had an issue where a researcher sent out false data, so this group would be able to, would evaluate that research and see, is it real research? Is it relevant? And is something that we can do with it for the betterment of our practice. The $50,000 is, that's, it won't reach that, it's really just to cover the insurance costs. They're a part, we have numerous partners. The board members include University of Scranton, Marywood, the Wright Center, Medical College, among others, and obviously, the Human Services.
Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Browning?
Bill, what kind of research are they looking at? Like, do you know, like you just said, they looked at something. Can you give me an example of what they're...
So, some of the research, if we have, well, the one that I was giving the example, we had a provider that submitted a report stating that Lackawanna County was the, was leading the number of foster care placements in the region, which is absolutely false, so we would actually take that back, and that's what was, we would discuss that and say why it's wrong, so we look at the data sources and say, they're not even measuring foster care. In that case, they had us as over 1,000 kids in foster care. We have 93, so, so things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Department of Human Services Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
19-0133.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is ratifying a Maintenance and Service Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify a Maintenance and Service Agreement with the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute to maintain the SAVN, statewide automated victim information and notification system for the period of January 1, 2019, until December 31, 2019. And here to speak on this resolution is Warden Tim Betty.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Tom.
SAVN is an automated system that's been in play for 10 to 15 years. It's statewide. It's all about victim notification, and what it does is it notifies victims of the placement of an individual into work release, out on furlough, paroled, going to community treatment, placement, and immediate notices of if there was to be an escape from any of those type of facilities and the return of that subject. It's all automated. It's just a matter of when we do a move at the prison, it, the automation kicks in and the victim gets notified within minutes of an event occurring. So, it's a good way to keep the victim up to date with what's going on with the person who perpetuated that crime against them. It's an annual thing, like I said, it's been going on 10 to 15 years or so, and it calls for the signature of a Commissioner and either myself or the District Attorney. This year, it's, the prisons turn to take the helm, so that's why I'm here.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Betty? I'd like to make a motion ratifying the Maintenance and Service Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
19-0137.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an Aging Contract Amendment. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a contract amendment on behalf of the Department of Human Services, Area Agency on Aging, with the Voluntary Action Center, as attached here too. And here to speak on this resolution is our Director of Area Agency on Aging, Jason Kavulich.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an extension of our existing contract with Voluntary Action Center. This is primarily going to fund services that they do through the telecenter for a prize. That's the insurance counseling that every individual in the county is eligible to receive to discuss what their choices are when it comes to Medicare Part P. So, it's a valuable service that we continue to offer. There was additional dollars on the table for this. They could use up to $20,000. We don't foresee that that is going to be necessary this year, but the contract cap we would extend it to is $20,000 more.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kavulich?
There's a few contracts here, so let me just have a minute. And I just was wondering, you give to United Neighborhood Centers as well, and UNC, and...
I don't think there's a UNC contract on...
Is that, is that not, should that not be on this attachment? Okay, what ones do you have on your attachment?
Well, this is, the next amendment is the new contract, this is a, this is a contract amendment to an existing contract.
Got it, okay, now I see, I had the wrong sheet, thank you. Okay. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into the Aging Contract Amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one three eight.
Thank you Commissioner, this is approving Area Agency on Aging Provider and Professional Agreements, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Provider and Professional Services Agreements with Northeastern Intermediate Union, NEIU, the Alzheimer's Association, the Jewish Home, Interpreter Services, Mediation Contract with Anthony LaBasi and the United Way of Lackawanna County. Here once again to speak on this resolution, Jason Kavulich.
Most of the contracts are connected, so those that aren't would be, the first contract would be the mediation services, that's to enhance our protective services work, rather than doing a more intrusive intervention as going in for guardianship and taking control of someone's resources and someone's decision making, we've decided to contract and expand, expand an existing contract that we've had in the county for 20 years to offer mediation services to older adults and their families. Hopefully we can see conflict resolution and empower the families to make decisions for themselves rather than going into court and doing a more invasive intervention.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Kavulich? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Area Aging, Aging Provider and Professional Agreement, do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks Jason.
The second contract would be with Mitri Shaw, she's an Indian interpreter in the community. We have a, a large population of Indians living in our, our, our community that require assessments from our office, this is to help us complete the assessments accurately and make sure the information that we're forwarding on to, to the state is correct.
Good job.
Thank you, yeah, it was all together.
It was all together, yeah. Motion nineteen dash zero one three one.
Thank you Commissioner, this is a motion to award the Stevenson Road Bridge Project to the lowest responsible bidder, T. Brennan, for $525,500. And here to speak on this resolution is Lackawanna County Engineer Gary Cavill.
Good morning Gary.
Good morning Commissioners. The first one that I'm going to talk about here is Stevenson Road, it's in North Abington Township. I know a couple of you have gotten calls over the years here on where it stands, and it's finally been awarded, or going to be awarded, let's put it that way. We received four bids, or three bids, I'm sorry, with T. Brennan out of Carbondale as being the low bid at $525,500. This is one of our larger bridges, and it's going to take some time due to de-watering, so the budget's slightly higher than what we anticipated.
How long can this project about, the whole thing start to finish?
They have 180 days from notice to proceed.
180 days?
And typically what the long lead time is, the fabrication of the box, because we have to get the shop drawings in, review them, then get them back to, back to their, whoever's going to fabricate them, and get it in their line of construction.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Cavill? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to award the Stevenson Road Bridge Project to lowest responsible bidder, T. Brennan, for $525,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one three two.
Thank you Commissioner, this is a motion to award the Bear Brook Road Project to the lowest responsible bidder of Minneke for, is that right Gary?
Minneke, but, close enough.
It's making him Italian.
They don't care, they're getting $322,000.
For, for, $322,000, that's correct Commissioner. And here to speak on the project, once again, is Gary Cavill.
Commissioners, we received four bids on this, with Minneke being the lowest bid, very familiar with Minneke, they did our Main Street Music Bridge for us, the Taylor Main Street Bridge, and they're actually the ones doing the Harrison Ave Bridge right now for PennDOT. They came in at a low bid of $322,000, and this is a bridge in, on Bear Brook Road in Madison Township.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I, I just want to compliment the people that worked on, on this, you know, you hear during the campaigns, oh, there's no bid, there's no bid, we're looking at three of them right here in front of us, and the Controller's Office does this, so thank you for your work on that. And, you know, I mean, it, just some of the crazy stuff that's reported in the paper, and they're actually done, so, thank you very much, I appreciate your work, just wanted to make sure that you're recognized for it, and that the fact that there's bids that were out there and done in our, our Controller's Office, that's all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding the Bear Brook Bridge Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Minneke, for $322,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thanks Gary.
Thanks Commissioner.
Okay, opportunity, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodawanis, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. I have a number of issues I want to address this morning, so let's begin with the status of the County Administration Building at 200 Adams Avenue. On June 27th, 2018, you approved the sale of the Administration Building to Jefferson Warner of Allentown for $1.6 million. That was almost one year ago. If memory serves, the original sales pitch for this government center included a statement to the effect that the Administration Building would be sold and returned to the tax rolls. I naively assumed that once you moved into this building, the Administration Building would change hands. Well, silly me. As of this morning, the county still owns the Administration Building, and it is still tax exempt. So I must assume we are still paying for utilities and insurance at the least. Yesterday I talked with Mr. Foley in the Assessors' Office and Tom Durkin, the county's CFO. Here is some of what I learned. If the Administration Building was taxed, it would generate $107,121.93 in county, school, and municipal taxes for all of 2019. That's a lot of money that's not coming in. Although the government center officially opened last January, some departments did not leave the Administration Building until February or maybe even later. A lot of office furniture was left behind, either because there was no room for it here, or it was being replaced by new furniture. Apparently Mr. Jefferson does not have a problem with the office furniture. If he can't use it, he can sell it or otherwise dispose of it. He does however, have a problem with the garbage that was left behind. Some departments, notably Tom Durkin's department, properly disposed of their garbage when they moved. Others, and I won't try to name them, left their garbage behind in the Administration Building. So the county has now received three bids to remove this garbage. These bids range from a low of $55,000 to a high of $90,000, and the money if approved would come out of professional services. When I asked why the county employees could not be sent back to the Administration Building to pick up their garbage, I was told that this would cause a potential problem with the union representing maintenance workers. I was also told that the maintenance workers should not be blamed for the garbage situation because their first priority was, and still is, getting the government center up and running. So I have to ask the following questions. One, when will the deed for the Administration Building be transferred to the new owner, Jefferson Warner, so that the property can be placed back on the tax rolls? Two, was the fact that the county still owns the Administration Building ever discussed or mentioned during a public meeting? If yes, when? If not, why not? Three, has the loss of tax revenue from the Administration Building and its additional costs such as utilities and insurance been factored into the cost of acquiring the government center? What in fact is the latest calculation for acquiring this new government center? And be advised that I will continue to request this information at future meetings. Next, there have been two state tax liens levied against the county in the last six months. The first lien for $3,822 was levied in December of 2018. According to Mr. Durkin, the problem was caused by a software glitch and several late unemployment compensation payments. The late payments may have been the result of misdirected invoices. The second lien for $20,305.81 was levied just last month. This lien involved unpaid unemployment compensation payments and reimbursements. Apparently the Treasurer's Office failed to make these transactions. Mr. Durkin is trying to work with the state to get advanced notice of similar problems to avoid future liens, and that is all well and good. However, as a CPA, he knows that the county should also institute appropriate internal controls to ensure that required payments and reimbursements are made in a timely manner, and that software updates are monitored to prevent future glitches. If John Q. Public has to pay his taxes and fees on time or incur penalties and interest, our government should do the same. I do not want to read about a third lien in the future. Next, I read in the Times Tribune that the county is looking to keep 52 parking meters off its newly renovated sidewalks around the courthouse. However, as NDC Director David Trevasani pointed out, NDC policy requires entities that take meters out of service to pay $20 per meter per day to have them bagged. While the county won't necessarily have to pay that rate, the same basic concept applies. So what will this cost the county, or more accurately, county taxpayers? Next, according to a Times Tribune article dated June 8th, the county settled two prison sex abuse lawsuits for $1.1 million, but the county had to pay a $50,000 deductible to the insurance company. This is the fifth such lawsuit settlement. Did we also pay a deductible for the other lawsuits? What were those amounts? And what is the current total cost of legal fees associated with the prison? Next, I spent several days in the Tax Claims Office reviewing just the library tax delinquencies. Fortunately, or unfortunately, the computer database only recorded delinquencies going back to 19, excuse me, back to 1991. But this list on the library tax was 1,670 pages long. I can only guess how long the list would have been if I asked for all the delinquencies. I also had a list of all county employees, but not their addresses, so I could not be sure if John Jones, that's a fictitious person, person on the delinquency list, was a county employee or not. Nevertheless, there were dozens of names in the database that matched the employee list, but I could not verify them without their addresses. Unfortunately, no one is keeping the list up to date. For example, I went through all the As and found 31 persons and/or businesses with the delinquencies that started as early as 1992 and continued through 2018. That's a 27-year range of delinquencies. Whatever happened to Sheriff Sales? Do you really think that the tax cheats are afraid of losing their homes or businesses? They're probably laughing at you and at me, and those of us stupid enough to do the right thing. In my opinion, you should have someone scrub that list immediately. If necessary, hire more people, there are only four people who work on the Tax Claims Office, and they cannot address this issue. Once you have a credible list, you can sort the tax cheats from those who through no fault of their own need a payment plan. Then you can drill down on the tax cheats and take whatever action is necessary to make them pay. Next, I want to compliment you Commissioner Cummings for taking the initiative to put an end to the revolving development loans program. Having said that, can you tell me when the Charlemont Restaurant will finally open for business? Finally, I'm sorry I missed the meeting.
I didn't cancel that program, I, I have questions on that, so, I'm glad you brought it up, but...
Well, finally, I'm sorry I missed the meeting on May 28th in Dixon City, that's what happens when you stop driving a car, but you can count on me to attend all the meetings here in downtown Scranton, and I just hope I can get some answers to my questions. And Commissioner O'Malley, several times when I'm up here at the podium, you tell me you'll address my questions during Commissioners' comments, and at the end of the meeting, you have the comments and you never address my issues and you walk out the door. I will keep asking these questions until I get answers, thank you.
Next.
Do you want to answer, let's answer her questions real quick for a second.
Yeah, can, can we just, yeah.
Parking, do you want, do you want to take care of the parking real quick?
The parking at the courthouse Commissioner? We're currently negotiating with the company, the ABM or NDC, the parking authority regarding the meters that are out of service, we don't think it's conducive to put the poles back into the sidewalks, it's going to cause the concrete to be structurally defective, water gets in there once you remove those poles, so we're talking with them about a number, no number has been reached at this point, but negotiations continue with them about not putting the meters in, because they're going to go to kiosks in October, so it doesn't make sense to put the poles back in and then remove them in October to put these kiosks up, so, then you're going to have holes in the sidewalk, you know what I'm saying, so...
What about the admin building?
I'm getting to that right now. The admin building, from the time that we actually came up with the idea of this building, we said that this, that that building would be sold. Well, we negotiated it, but until they take over, then it's officially sold. It will be sold, we'll be looking at probably September?
Yes.
September, for $1.6 million.
Well, Commissioner, let me, as usual, Ms. Hodawanis has some of her facts jumbled, but it was, put out for bid, it was sold, Jefferson Warner is the purchaser for 1.6-some million dollars. As for being on the tax roll, it was never intended to be sold last year because we were still occupying the building. In fact, there are still county offices in the building, I believe Brian Jeffers's department is still occupying the building, and we also have some IT equipment still in the building. However, that being said, it would not go back on the tax roll until 2020, because if you start the year tax exempt, they don't assess you in the middle of the year, it'll go back on the tax rolls after it's sold in the next year, so in 2020 is when it would actually go on the tax roll. So there's actually no loss of tax revenue for this year, there wouldn't have been anyway, even if we sold it in February.
They could plug it in the middle of the year.
They don't do that, that's correct, yeah, they wouldn't go on the record until 2020, okay, which it will be sold by the end of this year. Additionally, as for the furniture, Mr. Jefferson was not okay with us leaving the furniture, okay, I don't know where she got that story from. He wanted us to remove the furniture, and we did get bids, those bids for the 55 to 90,000 was not to remove garbage, it was to remove the furniture... Mr. Jefferson has come back and approached us, and he has requested a three-month extension from June to September to get his financing or whatever else he's doing in line. We negotiated with him that he would take care of the furniture. That was part of the condition. We said to him, "Well, if you want an extension, we'll give you the extension, but you be responsible for the furniture." So that will not cost us $55,000 now to remove it because the buyer has agreed that he will take responsibility for the furniture once we vacate the building.
What about the garbage?
There was no garbage, you said.
They'll be on our own maintenance, just the garbage and stuff. That's our own people. That's not going to cost us anything.
I don't know what she means by garbage.
Joan, I want to get this right out there real quick.
I'm not quite sure what she means by garbage.
This has always been a project that lived within its rents and its leases. And if, you know, I mean, if people have a problem with that, that's crazy because, I mean, we've always tried to live within our means, and this project isn't costing anybody except for the fact that the liens and the leases and the rents are actually going towards a building that everyone that's a taxpayer in this building in the county are going to actually own. You mean, that, this, there was a lot of hard work that was put into this, like not just the mortgage alone. We made sure that we didn't just do a bond, we did a mortgage so that we wouldn't incur any interest over the first year, which would have been over like a million bucks. As we drew out, that's when we started paying on that amount of money. We made sure that we utilized three banks within the community when we took the mortgage. There was a lot of in-depth thought into setting this building up, and the whole idea was for that to always go back in the tax roll, and we always guaranteed that, that it wouldn't be just sold to a nonprofit and forgotten about, or other buildings that might be owned by governments that are just strewn to the side. We made sure of that, and that's what this government's about. We try to make sure that we're efficient and effective, and this project was a great project. And it's still work to be done on it, but we're coming to the end of it. So I think it's a great project. And the Charlemont, I think that we're, he's waiting on a permit or something basically at this point. So we're looking at sometime next Monday. And like you said, everything's a work in progress. This wasn't something that was going to happen overnight. You know, I mean, I wish it was like this. I think we progressed county government pretty good. April of 2016, and we're sitting here, and it's June of 2019 at a commissioner's meeting. You mean, other administrations were trying to do this for three, four administrations ago. We did it in three years, three and a half years. Not an easy task, a hard task, but we made sure that we moved it forward. Okay?
There's something on the tax liens I would like an answer to on the $20,000 tax lien. Can Mr. Durkin come back in and explain how that happened? Because I would like to know how that happened too.
The.
If we can get him back in here, wherever he is.
We'll call Tom to come down. Okay, we'll go on to.
And then the other last thing, the $50,000 deductible, it would have been much higher, Joan, if we had done all those firings that they wanted to do when me and Commissioner O'Malley came into office.
That's always forgotten about, that there hasn't been any political firings in four years.
Yeah, that would have been way higher if that had occurred.
If our insurance director was here, he would tell you how much our savings is. You know, I mean, we're always trying to look for savings.
It was $3.6 million. It was $3.6 million just in that alone. So that is a savings for us because, I mean, that would have been up to $125,000 that they were paying out for deductibles that they're not paying anymore. They're down to 50,000. Actually, it was down to 45. So, I mean, that 50,000 number is a good, like, it's not 125,000 anymore. So, you know, that would have been a lot higher if we didn't do what we did when we first got into office.
We actually made a motion the last meeting or the meeting before that, you know, I mean, hopefully that no administration forward would just fire people just for fixing giggles or somebody's uncle needs a job. That's not what this is about. This is about making sure that we promote from within and we try to get the best people in the positions if we can for the most, the least amount of money for the best qualified person, so.
Thanks. Sorry, Bob.
Go ahead, Bob.
My turn?
They brought some sheriffs in for you, I see, so be careful.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Ballis, Scranton. I'm not going to get into what's been going on in the city. It's a Scranton issue. It's not a Lackawanna County issue. People have made comments that the party I'm opposing, for what they stand for, that it's about hate or bigotry. It's about respect. There's a big difference. It's about who you are, what you are, and what you contribute morally or otherwise. So there's no hate involved, and there's sure in hell no bigotry, especially from me. If anybody knows me in this community over the last 50-some years I've been an employer, I'll vote, no matter what your race, creed, color, whatever you did, you did your job, you went to work. If you didn't do your job, guess what? You didn't have a job. I've never discriminated against anybody in any way, shape, or form. But I will take you on when you challenge and address the morals and values that we have implemented from our ancestors and the people that built this community. And if you can't live by them, then don't come in here and say you want to change it and expect us to change it. It's not going to happen. I turn around and I take issue with people with moral values. I always have and I always will. Gianetti, who's running here as a commissioner, made comments on Facebook about me, about my past and all. There's nobody in here that doesn't know anything about my past that's been openly discussed before this forum. So I want him to understand one thing. If he's going to sit here and think he's going to be a commissioner, respect the people that come here and do your research. I've been very open about my life, about my time in the Lackawanna County jail. I'm an advocate for the jail in some form or another as a citizen. We got milk finally, now as we need is the damn pillows. Okay? And that's one thing I would ask the commissioners to finally do and get it out of the way. If he has issues with me, this is the place to talk to me about. Don't hide on Facebook like a bunch of little cowards. I'm very open, I'm very accessible. As a reporter sitting here knows, he could find me anytime, anyplace. Channel 16 found me. Chris Kelly and I have been friends, and we've been adversaries. And we went around and around yesterday. He has his opinions, I have mine, but I still consider Chris a friend, no matter what you say or what you do. And that's the way I've always been. And I've always been that before this forum, ever since I came here, and it'll never change. My comments that I made regarding the city of Scranton and Rothschild stand, and they will always stand, and I'm not taking nothing back. I stand on my ground, I stand on our rights, and she can stand on her rights. We'll see what happens in November. I take great displeasure with the Republican Party and its leadership for what they've done, especially Lance Tongi in his leadership role. It has nothing to do with Commissioner Cummings or anybody else as a Republican in this city. I don't think it was properly done. I've never agreed with endorsements in primaries. I've always believed in an open endorsement. Let the man or woman win, and then we'll support whoever wins. It was wrong, and I stand by that too. And if he has an issue with that, he could come here too. The other issue I have is I sent a letter to the mayor in the city of Scranton. This represents all of us to take the rainbow flag down and put up the American flag in its place. That respects all the people, especially those who died. We just saw what happened when we had our memorial last week or so. Of how many of our people died on beaches, never got to fire a weapon, never got to do anything else. We cannot disrespect the people in this community by hanging up a flag honoring somebody or a group that hasn't done anything for this country, this county, or the people. It's the American flag. It represents each and every one of us, all our vets, all our people, all of us that call ourselves Americans. And I would ask the county commissioners, send a letter to the mayor, if you would, requesting that flag be taken down and replaced with the American flag that honors everybody, all of us, our vets, living and dead, including the two vets that just died in the last couple weeks that blew their brains out with PTSD. An issue I've been very strong about, brought people here to help address it. And again, I would reiterate, we do whatever we can from the commissioner level. I've talked to the community hospitals here, people, they're all willing to get on board. We just need somebody to take the helm of the ship and save one more life. And that's the life of a vet or a life of a first responder. PTSD affects people in many, many areas, not just military. And it's an epidemic, and we've turned a blind eye to it, and we need to do something about it. And I would ask the commissioners, present and the future ones sitting over there, to take this by the helm. If it's not done, Jerry, okay?
There's still another election, Bob.
Pardon?
There's still another election coming up.
Yeah, I know, that's okay, but if you make it that far, I just want to put it on the table.
He'll make it.
That we take care of our people with PTSD.
I understand your position, and I respect your right and everyone's right to their opinion and their right to speak freely. But I think in this kind of forum, it can be dangerous to use this kind of rhetoric. This is a community that already has serious issues with levels of assault and violence, and there's no reason to incite it any further. I understand you're right, but I think we have to be more cautious and respectful of all of it. I agree the American flag represents all, gay, lesbian, transgender, everyone that is an American. I agree with you, what you're saying, but I think it's something that we have to be cautious in how we approach it.
Well, we have to respect, I think, and I agree with you, and I thank you for your comment, but we have to respect the majority, more so than the minority.
I think minorities and majorities all have to be respected.
You know, and that's what the flag represents, the majority, and that's why I brought that up. Okay? But I do appreciate your comments. Thank you. And that's what I like, is an open forum and open dialogue. I've always respected that from people, then hiding and then talking about it later. The other thing is the door slamming out here. You should try and do something about it because it becomes very disruptive. When you're in here speaking, you hear a door slam, and I think it disrupts a lot of people. The, one issue I have always had, and it's a continuing issue and it's going to continue, is in this past election, there was questions about Charlie Spano and the money that he was putting into the campaign. I filed litigation against it. It's gone before the court. The court said there's not sufficient evidence. So we're proceeding with a writ to do more discovery to see where the money came from. And if there's an issue there, we'll address it. If there's no issue, it goes away.
I'll join you in that. I have a problem with that.
Pardon?
I would join you in that. I have a major problem with that PAC.
I do.
Who said that there's not sufficient evidence?
Well, the judges, because what we presented was just ask for an injunction to stay the certification of the elections until we find out where the money went.
Oh, forget it. Wait, you're not talking about the same thing I am then?
Pardon?
You're not talking about the same thing I am? I thought you filed suit against the PAC.
Yeah, we've got it from the court, yes. And our next issue is a writ for discovery, and discovery allows us to go in a lot of different directions and get the answers. If the answers we get back are valid, well, then it'll move on forward through the district attorney's office for prosecution of campaign finance issues. And it'll have, if it does succeed, it will have a major impact on this past election. And that's where we're going with it. So I want to bring that up to the commissioners and to the people, although this issue isn't over. We want the truth, and we will get at it. If there's not an issue, then it goes away. But we will do the discovery and depth that they're not accustomed to, and we'll get the answer. It needs to be answered, it needs to be clarified, and we'll get that done. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other issue I have, and it's always been an issue, was with Joyce in the tax office as the solicitor and the tax collector. He cannot and should not be in a dual role. It's both self-serving, and it's illegal to do. Okay? We have a major issue with him. It's already in litigation between him and Colajewski when they filed a personal judgment on me, forced me into a bankruptcy to protect the property from a judicial sale, and it also forced me into liquidating a lot of assets we had in this community, and it cost a lot of jobs. So the consequences will be enormous if we're successful, and you should really look hard at that dual role he has right now. Let him be either or, or just go back to his own practice and do his own thing. But what he's doing is all wrong, and he knows it. And last, I have one of the properties that we do have in Lackawanna County that we're selling is the former dome that was up in Jessup. It has 80,000 square foot of artificial playing turf, and I'd like to make that available to the commissioners or to the county for county use before we do something different or somebody else comes in, tears it all up, and it has another use or another purpose. To open it up to the county as a playing field for just about any sport you want on it. And I'll make that available, and I'll try and negotiate a fair deal with the county to keep something like that in here for the future. With the church I bought, the Holy Cross Church in the hall next door, I've allowed the children to play basketball there, same as I did when I was a child and some of us in this room did. I've opened that up, and the kids play free there. But nobody takes that into consideration of what I am, other than to say I'm a hateful person and bigotry, which is the furthest thing from the truth. I'm the most respectful people, person to people until you rattle my cage, and then you'll have a fight on your hands. But it's not about bigotry or hate, it's about respect. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Before you go, I would just like to answer one of your things. I watched the Scranton City Council meeting, and the people that spoke after you said they were inclusive, they want to try and be inclusive. So I would not send a letter to the mayor that you're asking for, but I would be appreciative of a flag that had the word Jesus on it to be put there as well now, to recognize since they're being inclusive, you know, me as a born-again Christian and my religion and my beliefs. So if they're inclusive, then they'll make sure that that happens.
Well, that's what this forum's about.
You know, on Easter or...
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, that's what I would ask, since they're inclusive.
Yeah, you've been giving me orders ever since I was a kid. Go ahead.
They'll include a flag with the words, "Jesus, Fran." I'm talking about the Lord here, and you guys are talking about something completely different. So I would do that. I would send a letter asking him to put, to include Christians and put their flag up either, you know, at Easter or Christmas and recognize us, since it's about including everyone. I appreciate that.
I agree. It's about respect, and it's respect for everyone. Something you guys have always done and have allowed us to ramble on and sometimes get a little out of line, but at least you listen to what we had to say. And hopefully some things in the future are going to change, and we'll see what happens. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
And you too, Fran. I don't, you know, what the heck? I didn't want to give your age away, but what can I say?
Anyone else?
Tom.
Oh, Tom, yeah.
Commissioners, I understand Commissioner Cummings had a question about the state lien that was placed on the county.
I didn't. Joan didn't. I want to know the answer too, so.
I, Joan stopped up at my office yesterday, I believe, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about it, and I explained to her what happened and explained that frankly, it's an embarrassment, and it shouldn't happen, and we know it shouldn't happen. But what happened in this case, the long and short of it is, the treasurer's office pays electronic funds transfers through an online system with PNC Bank, which is our...
Exactly how it works, yeah.
General Fund Bank account. And they initiate those transactions by going online, and I don't really know how they do it, but press a couple buttons, and the transaction is initiated from our account to the account where we owe money. The state accepts our electronics transfers for the quarterly unemployment payments that we need to make. We're self-insured for unemployment, so like most businesses, we don't pay based on a rate times our payroll. We actually reimburse the state at the end of a quarter. They bill us for the claims that they paid for our employees who were collecting claims for the prior quarter. Excuse me. At the end of 2018, we received an invoice for approximately $21,000. That invoice initially goes to the treasurer's office. It then goes to the HR office for them to review it, to make sure that all of the people that we're paying for, that are included on the invoice, were indeed employees who are collecting unemployment appropriately. Once... It then goes to the HR office for them to review it, to make sure that all of the people that we're paying for, that are included on the invoice, were indeed employees who are collecting unemployment appropriately. Once that process is completed, they send that invoice, HR sends it to the Revenue and Finance Office. We input the invoice in our system to be paid. The controller reviews it, as they do all invoices to be paid, approves it. When it's ready to be paid, rather than writing a check, we pay that electronically. The controllers, or, excuse me, the treasurer's office inadvertently didn't hit the switch to transfer that $21,000 in January, when we should have transferred it. The treasurer's office found the error once the lien was placed. I've written a letter, we did transfer the $21,000 now. I've written a letter to the state requesting that they inform us if there's a balance due that we haven't paid, rather than initiating a lien, because a lien costs them money. It's certainly an embarrassment for the county. And if we'd been notified about this amount, we would have paid this in due process long ago when we got notified. Unfortunately, it was an error in the treasurer's office. I did explain to Joan that we have implemented a procedure now where the treasurer's office, when they're doing their bank recs, the people who generate the electronic payments now look through the bank statement and compare it to the list of electronic payments that they have made in the previous month, to make sure that those payments have cleared, so that we don't have something fall through the cracks like that again. But that's essentially what happened.
Every quarter, we always know what's due, every quarter. I mean, I'm, I'm, this is like $20,000. A lien affects our ability to get loans. A lien, I mean, this lien isn't going to go away. Does it work for the same as the government lien, or...
That's not going to affect our bond rating. Our bond rating is... It will not. That goes by...
Well, if it keeps happening, it will. It's gotta. Like, it's ridiculous. And everybody knows when taxes are due.
It is correct, Commissioner.
Like, this should be, it happened once, and Joan's right, it shouldn't happen again. I mean, this should be something we're looking for in our records. This is the most important, quarterly's and your payroll is the most important thing.
Commissioner, our records show that it was paid, because we pay this through our financial system, as we do every payment that we make out of the county. We pay it out of the general fund through our financial system. The, depending on what department it goes through, in this case, it was Revenue and Finance, puts an invoice in the system, sends the batch over to the controller's office, the controller reviews it, approves it, or sends it back, but eventually approves it for payment, and then we do a batch to pay all those bills. Most of the bills that we pay are done by check. The controller's office takes the batch that we have to pay the bills, they print all the checks. Those payments that we make by electronic funds transfer, though, are done through the treasurer's office, and that's what this was. It was an electronic funds transfer that was recorded as paid in the system, because everything had been done through the system as it should have been. It's just that the treasurer's office inadvertently didn't make the transfer that they should have made in January. They did make it as soon as we found this, as soon as the lien came out, so we did pay the bill, and now we believe that we've implemented a procedure that will prevent this particular mistake from happening again.
What's that procedure?
The treasurer's office now reviews bank statements for the electronic funds that have been transferred in the last 15 days. They get bank statements from the bank and do bank recs twice a month instead of at the end of the month, because it's voluminous. But now they'll take the semi-monthly bank statement and go back over the list of electronic funds transfers that had been initiated in the last 15 days to make sure that it hit the bank statement, so that even though it was recorded, as I said, in our financial system, the money never transferred, and now they're reviewing the bank statements to make sure that those electronic fund transfers did transfer.
They should be able to see them that day. Like, they should be able, all the online stuff should be able to be viewed whenever you request. You shouldn't need a bank statement to look at it, you can look at it right online, right? Or no? They don't have one?
That's true.
Okay.
But, I mean, again, this is just an additional procedure that we added, Commissioner, to try and avoid something like this from happening again. There's a safeguard in place now. That's right.
So we're just essentially tackling the wrong person, so maybe we should have the tax office come forward.
This won't necessarily stop all future liens, because something else could happen. And the problem that we have right now, and I've notified the state twice, they don't tell us when we haven't made a payment.
They're not going to, either.
Or they don't tell us... Pardon me?
They're not going to. They don't care, they're going to get...
Why wouldn't they? They do everybody else.
Because they get additional money when they don't. They'd send you a notice, and if you don't read it, and you don't send it in.
But we don't get those notices, and that's the problem. They send out a notice. If you personally, or I owed the state money for something, they would send me a notice and give me an opportunity to pay. And then if I don't pay, they would assess a lien. They don't provide that courtesy to the county. They don't send us a notice to tell us that we have a past due amount. And I'm just asking them to do that. Send us a notice and tell us if we have something past due, so we have an opportunity to pay it before it gets to the lien process.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom, thanks for coming down. Okay? Thank you.
Very hard to believe.
Okay. Commissioners, other business.
I want to talk about the Economic Development Office, the articles that came up in regards to the loans, and Joan had talked about that. I did not, none of us up here were aware that this can't, this program, nobody in our office was aware that this program was canceled. So I guess my question would be, like, my question with the Scranton Times was, I didn't know it was canceled. They're the ones that told me, through a series of emails. I came, I asked our office what happened. I have the entire packet of back and forth things that went on, but there was three questions I was looking for, you know? Well, first of all, you know, why didn't, the way the process works, we just saw Maureen McGuigan and Area Agency on Aging, Human Resources, all of them, come to the podium to ask us to vote on numerous items that were either bid out and to vote to approve them, or that a committee had decided somebody should get money for, and they come to the podium after that committee decides that, and they come to us and tell us what those programs are. They give us a huge list of it. Everything that they spend, whether it's $2 or $50,000 or $500,000. They stand before the commissioners and tell us, they give us the list of the amount. We go into a work session on Fridays prior to this meeting and discuss all of this. And then the director or whoever's in charge of that specific program comes in and says, "These are the items that our office and these committees have decided to spend the money from, you know, either community reinvestment or whatever, whatever the program is." That was the missing link that I was talking about in regards to transparency. It had nothing to do with any committee that was involved in voting for the programs or the money that was sent out. It had nothing to do with anything, other than the missing link of that coming to the commissioners to vote on, because we didn't even know that there was a loan out there for the guy that is opening the Charlemont again. As can be noted in our previous meeting, when I looked at both commissioners and asked them if they knew about that $25,000 loan, and they had no idea. So that's the missing area that I'm talking about to the Scranton Times when I was asking for information on that, is why wasn't that process followed that way? That's the, that was the change I was looking for, and that's what we all voted on up here, was for the department head to come to the commissioners, review those programs and what was passed at their, either in their committees or in their office, and have us look at them to decide if we wanted to approve them. The way it was done was, it was put into a payable. It never came to this podium for us to discuss in front of the public. That's the section I'm talking about being non-transparent. And I keep repeating myself over and over again, because for some reason, people aren't understanding the words that I'm saying when I say that. It had absolutely nothing to do with any committee that was involved. I applaud committees that take the time out of their day to come here and volunteer their hours, or whatever amount of time they come in, to try and help be, you know, more inclusive and transparent for the county residents. So I'm really not sure why that was a major topic of conversation in regards to this. The transparency I was looking for is specific to the department head coming to this podium and telling the public where the money was being allocated and us to vote on it. That's what I was talking about. That did not happen. I asked my fellow commissioners if they were aware of that amount of money. They said no. That's why we changed that process. That was the only process that got changed at that time, regardless of the amount of money. So I just want to try and be clear on that. I'm hoping I'm clear on that at this point, and saying it to the best of my ability to make people understand what exactly I was looking at and why I felt that there needed to be more transparency in that process. So I guess I would still ask, how did this, the next thing is, how did this get canceled? Because any programs that we choose to implement, we usually talk about and vote on...
Commissioner, not to interrupt you, but I just want, we, myself and the Chief of Staff met with the Director of Economic Development, the Acting Director, Monday, and the program actually has not been canceled. The program still exists, it's just it's not currently processing any applications at this time, and they're looking into potentially having someone else handle that. But that would come to the Board of Commissioners before that decision is made.
That's what I'm saying, right.
Yeah. But the current, the program does still exist, it has not been done away with. We thought it was done away with, we had a report that it was done away with, but clarified it with her on Monday, and the program still exists. It's just not currently processing any applications at this time.
Okay. I'm trying to be very patient on this, and I apologize. I have to make sure that this is clear, Commissioners, because I don't want them upsetting volunteers that come in here and try and do a job. So I want to make sure I'm very clear on this. And I'm actually going to ask for your signature on a letter to some of these committee volunteers to, you know, state the fact that we appreciate the work that they've done volunteering, and that this in no way had anything to do with the work that they've provided for our county. And how that even came about, I have no idea, but it did, it became an issue. Okay, so I see the emails going back and forth between all of you here in regards to these amounts. There's all these checks, I mean, all these checks since 2016. I remember when we talked about implementing this program back in 2016. Where that memory of mine came in also is beyond me. I was one of the people that was in favor of this program starting, because it was an allotment to small businesses, and I know when we implemented it back then. So, no, I did not forget anything about this program. I'm not sure where those commentary even, I don't know where that came from, just another distraction. The whole thing was just a distraction from, you know, what I was looking for. I mean, it says that the program was canceled in these emails, so I understand where you guys got your information from and why Joe DiRizzo sent it out that it was canceled. I see it right here. So now we're saying it's not canceled. So that was a change in information. So now, I guess I'd like to know what exactly is going on with this program and any other program that we have in that office, and if it's going to be done in a different manner in the future. And a lot of these, this money that was given out, these businesses no longer exist. I mean, there was, there was businesses in this list, they don't, they don't exist anymore. They're, they didn't, they didn't make it. And this is a loan, so they're supposed to be paying back this money. And, I mean, there's a lot of questions I have on this. There's reasons that I have questions on this. It's taxpayer money, and I just, it should have come to our attention. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 people that were recipients of these funds that didn't come before here to vote on. And that was the process I'm looking for, so now I have two answers. It was not canceled, the program's still implemented. I don't know why these committee people were listed in this article, but they were, and I had no problem with the work that they do, none whatsoever, and I'm just going to keep repeating that over and over again, so that no one can say that I did. And we already changed the implementation of how it's done with the Office of Community Economic Development, so the fact is, is they just have to come here and show us these allotments and vote on it. Is there anything that you can think of, or I'm not stating that clearly and need to re-clarify that, because I just don't want these committee people to be upset? Okay. Thank you.
The committee people did a great job. They're all volunteers.
Yes, they are.
They're workers of the community, and they volunteered their time and their efforts and their talents to review these applications and to make recommendations based upon that. So they did a great job, they really did, and again, they don't get paid for it, so it was all a matter of volunteer service on their part.
Exactly. And I applaud anybody that volunteers their time, you know, to do that. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
And just to clarify, Commissioner, out of the 11 loans that were awarded over the last, since 2016, only two have defaulted, okay? And because of the nature of the loans, of course, they, we have their personal obligations pledged, not just the business, but also their own personal, and we are pursuing those, those two. Out of the 11, there were two of them that...
Oh, good, then you just answered my next question. So then we pursue that at what, who does that? Who does that work?
The Solicitor's Office, we have counsel assigned that is going to pursue that. They're in the process of litigation, they're in litigation with these folks to recover that.
Okay, good, all right, so then I don't have to worry about that, that's done.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Okay. Well, I thank you for your response. In regards to Joan, Joan, did you get all the answers that you were looking for?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in regards to the Scranton City debacle, you know, I just find it so hypocritical that people are looking to condemn a person for stating their beliefs, and then we get, I'm just so angry that some, a citizen was attacked. I don't believe that it was, there was a lot of things that were done improperly, and I, you know, I'm the last one to talk about, you know, getting a little bit emotional and saying things that maybe don't come out the right way, but I think that maybe the items that are being talked about at the podium, either at the Scranton City Council or here, some of them aren't appropriate for us to discuss and shouldn't be in government whatsoever. There are things that I bring up that never would be thought of to be brought up at a commissioner's meeting. However, it's been brought up through those organizations and their own doing. I mean, this is what they campaign on. They are, you know, becoming activists, and this is what they're campaigning on. So the topic's going to come up, especially if that's what you campaign on, and your campaign page states that stuff. But I just find it so hypocritical for the local newspaper to condemn someone about being bigoted for their Christian beliefs. If you're going to call a Christian a bigot because of something God tells them, and they believe God tells them that, then expect to get kicked back, because, you know, we're talking about God here. We're not talking about the next-door neighbor. So knock it off. You want to talk about hurting somebody by calling them a bigot because they believe in God's Word? Are you kidding me? Stop it. You want, you, you know, if you want respect, show it yourself. This is, this is how they portray your first female commissioner ever. That's, that's it. Look at that mark. Do I look like that? Do I look like this kibetic, old woman? This is how they, they treat people. Here's how they titled their articles. Cheese and crackers. Hypocrite much? Hypocrite much, Chris? I applauded Chris Kelly on his efforts. Never would I hurt somebody that was going through that kind of stuff. But you know what? No one has a throwing, nobody can be throwing stones around here. I've heard the most vile things since working in this building, from people that work in this building. Vile. They say terrible, terrible things about all three of us. They have no room to talk or commiserate about anything that a man that goes in and talks about his values and Christian beliefs. And quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of it. Maybe the churches need to start standing up for their, their people and coming to these kind of meetings, and backing us up, because we're getting decimated out here... us up, because we're, we're getting decimated out here. This is the way we're treated, as a Christian person called a bigot, because we're talking about something that we believe in from, from God, from the Bible. I never thought that would happen 20 years ago. It shouldn't happen. That shouldn't happen either. So two rights don't make a wrong. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Toole.
Two wrongs don't make a right. Sorry. You know what I meant.
Okay. Just like to remind everybody that on Friday, June 14th, we're going to be having Senior Fun Day back at McDade Park, 10 to 1:00 p.m. Lots of activities. It's a great day. June 16th, we're going to be having, I'd like Ricky, Ricky, go up to the podium, talk about Field of Dreams for a minute. Idea really matters. These kids get an opportunity to go play up at PNC Field, home of the Champion Rail Riders and stuff. And, you know, I mean, it's, I mean, some of them, that might be the last time they play on a field.
Yes, Commissioner. Our Field of Dreams game has expanded to a doubleheader. It's the seventh year that we've sponsored this game, along with the Visitors Bureau from Lackawanna County and the Visitors Bureau from Luzerne County, amongst other sponsors. We partner with the Howerton Foundation, local foundation that fights cancer, and we give kids from Lackawanna County and Luzerne County the opportunity to play their last high school game, seniors, on the field that is the Field of Dreams here in, in northeastern Pennsylvania.
Great job, Ricky.
Thanks. We'll have, the big schools will face off at 1:30 on Sunday.
That's on June 16th.
That's Sunday, June 16th. And at 4 o'clock, the small schools will face off. We, we split up the schools from the Lackawanna League and the Wyoming Valley Conference.
Thanks, Ricky.
You've got it.
Um, June 22nd, we're going to be having our Bike Safety Fairback and Family Fun Day at McDade Park. Please go back. Your kids checked out. Get your bikes checked out. Make sure they're safe. We got a long summer ahead of us. We'll make sure the kids are safe. And that's 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. And last but not least, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Father's Day. Can I make a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.